Okay, well, let's do it. Um, okay. Oh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, friends and neighbors. Welcome to this meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the 21st of March in the year 2022. And we are all here except for Counselor Paige Hook, who is called out on business. And so we will go ahead with a quorum. Uh, let's start with the flag, so please, would you join me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That's a good thing to do. Let's see, additions to the agenda under announcements none that I know of, declarations of ex parte contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera. Hearing nothing, there are no appointments this evening on your public comment. Mr. Ed Deal, uh, would you like to sit there and address the council? And welcome.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Ed Deal, and I'm running for state representative in the new House District 17 as a Republican. Uh, the House District 17 is, they just redid the districts, if you're not aware. But our district now covers the, covers the San Yum Canyon on Marion and Lynn County sides, State and Sublimity, Almsville-Turner, Sunnyside, the South Salem, and then a large chunk of unincorporated East Salem. So that is, uh, our new district. It's unclaimed, and, uh, so I'm gonna run for it. I've lived here for 25 years on the same 38 acres just out of Cyo. I'm in the State and School District. My kids went through the State and School system. I'm, I serve on the Board of San Yum Hospital. I serve on the Board of Catholic Community Services Foundation. Uh, I'm on the Knights of Columbus, I'm the Grand Knight. Just met a fellow Knight I hadn't met before. And I've been heavily involved in the wildfire relief effort through San Yum Canyon Wildfire Relief Fund and then our new long-term recovery group. So serving and advocating for this community is a very big deal for me, and I'm very passionate about it. My background is in business. Uh, I have a degree in engineering from Stanford University of Bachelors and Masters. That's where I met my wife, who grew up in Cyo, and that's ultimately how we ended back up, back here. But I started a business with my wife and two partners, uh, many years ago now, and built that up to, uh, 100 employees and doing factory automation and controls. Uh, someone here works at Jeldwin. Yes, we, we did some work there a while back. Uh, but, uh, that company was, uh, and still is very successful. I sold that, my interest in that four years ago, and then since then have been devoting my time to, uh, to more volunteer activity. But, uh, my website, you have a link to it there, eddeal.com. Uh, my platform is on there. You know, the issues, how much time do I have? Okay. The issues I, I'm focused on, I, I believe, are the issues that are important to this district. I, I want to work to, uh, reduce the scope and power of our governor's emergency orders. I, I do not want to see mandates like we saw this go around and church closures and school closures and so on. I am very much a pro-business candidate. Uh, I want to support growth and new business. We have a problem right now in Oregon. Businesses are leaving this state. Businesses that are here are investing their money in other states. We have to turn that around. And the wildfires, I do not believe they were necessary. We had a chance to put those out, plus it's 30 years of forest mismanagement. I want to try and turn that around so we have healthy forests that produce jobs and prosperity for the canyon. I could go on about things, but I think that's about the end of my time. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Deal? He's got a minute, does he have a minute? Yes, let's give him a minute.
I'd be happy to take questions, if you have any questions.
60 seconds.
I can make one comment, that this is a, uh, the primary is on May 17th. There is no Democrat that's filed. I have one Republican opponent. Most likely, this, uh, this race will be determined in the Republican primary. Most likely, so.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
I just want to say thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
It's gotta be a plus, a candidate that comes to a city council meeting, that's, that's a good thing.
I regret to mention that's something I want to do. As a representative, stay attached with the city council. Can't believe I forgot that. That's important to say, attached with the city council. To make sure that I'm, and that would be you.
Ed, again, what communities? All the canyon communities, uh, as far south as Cyo? Not, not that old district?
No, it, it covers, actually, uh, you know where Ridge Drive is?
Right, right.
It, it goes west to Ridge Drive, on Ridge Drive, to my fence line. Literally, I'm on the corner of the district. Uh, my fence line is the, is the district end on, on Ridge Drive. And it, it heads up the canyon, kinda scoots by Jordan, and then catches the highway and, uh, ends up, so all of Lyons is in, is in the district.
And then part of East Salem?
Yes.
East of Corden?
Everything, yeah, east of Corden to Howell Prairie.
Okay.
Clear up to Hazel Green. Uh, and then, uh, part of, part of, uh, a few blocks actually west of Corden for part of the area. Yeah, I don't know how they draw it. I think what they wanted to do is get all the Republicans out of Salem, and they did a pretty good job of that, so. This is a very Republican district, the way they carved it. 20 points, Republican.
How do they do that?
Uh, when one party runs the, draws the lines, that's what they end up with.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate you again. All right, uh, let's see, March 7th, City Council Regular Session Minutes on the consent agenda, excuse me. Could we, after due consideration, could we have some action on those, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor?
I, um, like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Got a motion and a second to, uh, accept the, the, uh, consent agenda as presented. So, Alyssa, would you pull the council, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Orton?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes forward to zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, no public hearings this evening under general business of fiscal year 2122, I think. I don't know what happened to my glasses this evening, but certainly not on my face. A quarter, a quarter and financial report as of December 31st, 2021. Susanna? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Right, just give me a second, I can't get the PowerPoint to pop up there. I think I know that by now. Okay. All right. Now I got a PowerPoint for you guys to look at. I also left a copy on your, uh, at your desks, your chairs there as well, so you'd have a copy, if that's easier for you. But we're gonna talk about, uh, quarter two of this current fiscal year that goes through December 31st. And so we're gonna talk about the, your financial report that's in front of you. We're gonna go through the revenue that we've received, uh, through quarter two. We're gonna compare that to, um, the prior year revenue. Take a look at our expenditures for this quarter, talk about the pool, and then just kinda talk about the effects of the revenue on what we've seen through, um, COVID at this point. So your format is still the same that I've been doing for the last year. Everyone seems to be positive with that format, so we're gonna continue with it. So now, since this is quarter two, this goes through the end of December 31st of 20. So your first column there will be as of December 20 of last year, compared to your yellow column, which is the current fiscal year that we're in. That's in December, and then our Y is our budget. And then the last is our, their variance for the budget to actuals for the revenue, and then the bottom half will be a different piece. So then the bottom half talks about our expenditures. So our percentages change with each quarter on when our, uh, red, yellow, and, um, green takes a place. So for this one, at this point, if everything is 46% and above, it's completely green, because we're at 50% of the year is expended. So we're using that as our guide for, okay, we're really underspending, so we're, we're not gonna go over budget at that point. And then if it's in the yellow, or it could tilt or one way or another, if your percentages are between the 47 and 52%, that means you're a little bit more than average, might wanna take a look at Y. And then if it's over 53%, it's in the red, and that's something we need to address. And you can see from this report that the community center is at 55%. And at the Budget Committee meeting last week, we talked about, we've had additional rentals, we've had more cleaning costs, a few maintenance things came up. So we, when we come back to council for the budget change, we've added some money, because this one has a pretty good chance of overspending, according to budget. And the other one you saw is the parks, and we talked about that last week as well at the Budget Committee, because the tractor that we thought we were purchasing last year showed up this year, so we had to make budget adjustments, and there's some additional, um, uh, mowing costs and things like that, that this will come back with a budget adjustment as well. And the pool did not come back at a budget adjustment, but it is in the red. But some of the expenditures that have tilted this has our, our one-time expenditures spent, so I don't think we'll go over budget, but we will definitely have more to talk about with the pool as we go. Did anyone have any questions on this report itself, before I go into the comparisons?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. Thank you. Susanna, uh, you mentioned that with the community center allocating some more funding for that at budget, where would that be coming from? Which fund, just general fund or transfers?
Yes, it's gonna come from the general fund, and then the offset will be reducing contingency for that $5,000 that I talked about at the Budget Committee to do the adjustment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Susanna, um, so the money that comes in from the rentals, does that go into the general fund?
Yes. Okay. Any other questions for that, before I go on? Okay. So then this is, of course, I always show you so you can kinda see the comparison. And as quarter one, you saw that property taxes was low, but by now, we've collected almost 90% of what we're gonna collect. So you can see that now we're up to 36% of the total revenue collected is in property tax and charge for service sitting at 39. The big difference you'll notice as intergovernmental is usually a lot lower, but this has the ARPA funds in it, and this is part of why, um, that pie is so much bigger at this time. And so then we take a look at the actual numbers. So these are actually comparing the numbers from December to the numbers of December for this year. And you can see that we're starting to collect more property tax. We got almost $300,000 more that we collected by December this year versus last year. And last year, I told you how we usually get the majority by December. We got a last, a lot of late, uh, property tax payments last year. This year, we're kind of more on track with people paying them in that first, uh, window when property taxes are due. And you can see with charge for service, we're starting to see a climb in that as well. It's a little over $140,000 more than we collected last year. And of course, intergovernmental, that 900, the biggest majority of that is the ARPA funds, because the ARPA check we received was $920,000. So that's really why you're seeing that big difference, um, there. Last year, we also had some CDBG grant money that would offset, so that's why you're not seeing the full grant difference, so, um, so that's kinda why that's different. And then the other revenues, those are a combination of court fees are still down. We haven't gotten that back on track yet. Um, franchise fees, timing for why that one's less. I don't think the 120 less than last year is anything to be concerned about this point. We're watching court closely, but that's really a combination of those things. We also have lower interest rates still, so that's affecting things. We're still looking at 0.75%, where before COVID, we were like 2.4% for interest. So that makes a difference in these other revenues for why it's a little bit lower. Any questions on that part?
Susanna? Susanna, um, I know that you have talked before about the interest rates. Can you explain what that is and how that affects our, our budget?
So our, our beginning fund balances remain in a state account that generates interest. So this 13 million that we have sitting there, um, and that interest rate, everyone, it's divvied out to all the funds accordingly. Uh, we have a methodology of how much is in each fund, and we divvy out that interest every month. So the interest helps on those accounts, especially the ones that we're building money. So when it drops that much of a percentage and you're sitting on some funds, since we underspent the last couple of years for the unstable, that's a decent amount of interest that we've lost. That, that was, you know, it's part of the unstableness of our revenue, if that makes sense.
Definitely. How, how was that decided? Like, how was the interest rate decided? And why does it drop like that?
I don't know what the bank's methodology is for why they do that. Like, that one I don't know, because that's the state's, because it's in their state, um, bank account, because it's the most secure, because it's fully protected. Because a regular bank where our money in, they only protect $250,000, right?
Yeah.
So this is in the states, and I don't know what methodology they use to determine what our interest rate is.
Mr. Mayor? Susanna, can you tell me, uh, on the other revenue? You were talking about the reduction in court fines, is that what you said?
Yes.
Can you tell me how the court fines are, uh, generated?
They're generated from, it's just our local activity that takes place for tickets. Um, and then they have a court case, and the, we have court on Wednesdays, and then the judge, uh, sets the fines for whatever the situation is. So it's been a combination of there hasn't been as many tickets. We've had a lot of COVID, so we haven't had court open for people to come in and, um, plead their case, so they're holding back on pain. So it's kind of been that combination of, because courts been closed the last three weeks, because the judge was out with COVID, and then before that, the court clerk had COVID twice. So it's just been, it's been, um, kind of a hard thing to keep stable at the moment.
Okay, so it's between the police department and its planning in there as well? This planning issue, citations or warnings or whatnot, that would end up in the court?
Oh, for ordinances? Um, yes, if there's some ordinance that could go to that, or if there's tampering with meters, that could be sent through there as well. Those don't come as much, I don't think. I don't really know the percentage breakdown. But yeah, those, those could go to the court as well.
Could you, next time, come around, maybe or just shoot me an email with the, with the reduction on, what the fines have been, and what the reduction in other revenue has been? Or maybe send it to the council? I'm just curious to see, year over year, maybe? Or maybe the last two years? Is there a way to do that?
Oh, yeah. You want the last two-year detail breakdown, like this, of the other revenues? Okay.
Just, just for the court, since we, since we're talking about COVID, I think, uh, COVID-specific, so maybe two years is fine. I just wanna see the, the impact that we keep hearing.
Okay, I can show you all of them. I mean, it's not gonna take me much to spread it out. You can see how our, our franchise fees for Pacific Power continues to decrease. That's still going down. That's been a big issue. We've had many conversations before you came on council about what France, happening with our franchise fees. So, but yeah, I can do that little spreadsheet and see the details totally.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor? This just thought, kind of came to my mind, and that we don't have to have this discussion now, but I'm curious, how long have we, do you know how long we've had? Maybe this is a question for you. How long we've, like, State and has had their own court? And, and what that looks like in terms of, um, I don't know, because we have a part of our budget, so. What I, what I'm getting at is, like, do all cities have their own court system?
Some do.
I think a lot of them are moving that way. So Marion County used to take care of it all. And I believe, I had to dig in my memory here. I think we opened our court in about 2014. I remember it was when Keith was first knew. Brian's saying I'm right, so my mind is a little bit still. So we had, yeah, because we had the Marion County Justice Court here in town, and then they, uh, approached the city, said they're not gonna offer that anymore. I think that Sublimity is actually going through the same thing right now. They're creating their own court also, so.
Would that be, like, something to think about and consider? To have, like, a, like, a city, like, a joint city court that you could maybe, like?
Potentially. I, I think that they hired a judge already.
With Sublimity?
Or, I mean, even? Yeah, I think that they have a judge already. I, I've just kinda heard it through some of the meetings I've been to, but, um, potentially, maybe?
Yeah, they're just starting, they're just starting.
Yeah.
And kind of narrow focus just on Sublimity, ordinances and whatnot.
Well, I'm just thinking, like, how much does it, how much does it generate for the town of, you know, for smaller towns? How much traffic do you have to?
Also remember that, um, anything higher than a misdemeanor or minor traffic, don't have insurance, you know, fix-it tickets, things like that. Those still go to Marion County, so DUIs or anything like that. And we get a percentage of that that they give us, but we don't process those cases, but we still get a part of what those that happen in our area. So that's another piece. And just for an example, this year, we budgeted just over $89,000 for court, and we're at 55% collection, and before COVID, we were looking at about $120,000 we were getting a year for, uh, court. Just because I have the report right here. Thank you. Any other questions on this part?
Go ahead, Susanna.
Okay. So from here, I kinda wanted to just kinda let, so this one here is a nice visual where you can just see the difference between those main categories. The green being the current fiscal year that we're in, and the orange, last fiscal year, just, and it's always nice to have a visual go with numbers, so you can kinda see the changes, um, in that. And then I, this is looking at just the collection rate. This isn't dealing with our assessed value and those kind of things. This is literally just what we collected. So I thought maybe for the next few slides, I'm just gonna talk about the last three years and just what's come in for these main buckets. So you can see the difference from December of 19, we had that to 1.9 million, we're December of 20, and then December of 21. And if you kinda look at that, you'll notice that in the peak of COVID, um, it did decrease down, where we didn't get as much. So if you look at just this year to last year, you're just seeing a 2% in the change for the little bit of increase we've got. But if you look back to 19, you can see we have a 4% increase. So it's just interesting to see the pattern and see that we're slowly seeing a little bit of improvement, um, of just our collection rate, not our assessed value rate. Questions on that? Because our assessed value is a whole nother conversation. I mean, before COVID, just for example, the reality, the before COVID, our, our assessed value had increased to, like, a little over 5%. This year, right now, we're like just barely over 3%. So we lost some ground, um, and we see a little tiny bit better, because I think it was like 2-something last year. So it's kind of a little bit better, but it's not as, it's steady growth that it used to be. So we've lost a lot of ground in this last three years with our property tax, basically. So then you take a look at the local gas tax, you're gonna kinda see some of the same things. So December of 19 was before COVID, because COVID started in March of 2020. So you can see what our collection and, and the local gas tax, um, for the state gas tax. I put it's local, but it's actually the state. And then, then you see how it dropped down a lot last year, and then it's slowly climbing back up. And if you look at the comparison from this year to last year, you see, oh, great, we got a 19% increase, but the reality is the year before, we saw a 10% reduction. And if you just compare it to 19, before COVID, we're only seeing a 6% increase. So you're seeing this very small climb again. It's just with this crazy up and down, but it's gonna slowly come up a little bit. It's just been a really, it's an interesting pattern as you're trying to write a new budget. Now with utility billing, you can see, and keep in mind that NORPAC closed in October of 19. So that was a big hit to us. Then we went into COVID, and then you can see from December of 19, you see the drop. You see that we see about an 8% increase from last year, so people are paying. We're down to a very, very small number of people during COVID that are still on a payment plan. But you can see that with the loss of NORPAC, and then comparing 19 to 21, we're only seeing a 1.5% increase. Very small, that doesn't even keep up with the inflation change. Any questions on those two? I think it's helpful to see this data, especially as we're going into budget and we start talking about why we chose the revenues, what we did and what we're doing. And this is a big part of why the city has held back on a lot of projects, or been real careful before they did any, and we're still trying to fill vacant positions, because we waited, now we're trying to fill them. So because of this unstable, we've been really proactive in being careful. And then our beautiful pool. Our pool pool. So the pool was closed. Where's my slide for the pool that my notes? And then, so this one is, is kinda tough to compare. So you've got, um, you see that we were closed last year, you see? And this is only looking at charge for service. This is looking at the memberships, the rentals. This isn't looking at property tax. So let me clarify that, because I didn't make that note on the slide, and I noticed that while I was going through my notes. I'm like, oh, well, that wasn't very helpful, because I didn't actually tell you that this does not include property tax. We've collected $160,000 as of the end of December for property tax for the pool. But the property tax alone does not keep up with the need for the pool. The charge for service that we collect from the community is critical in us being able to maintain the pool. So this is showing you that we're not getting people back yet. There's still some concerns, our rates are low, and, um, we need to watch this closely, which is why the other slide's gonna talk about. So this kinda shows you that pattern. So if this pattern continues with the $18,000 we received, and it was the same pattern for the rest of the year, we're only gonna come in at about $55,000 in revenue, and we budgeted $190. So that's gonna make it difficult as we plan to go forward. But we're hoping this changes. We're hoping as COVID becomes less, that people get more comfortable coming in the water. A few things we've noticed is we've seen some increase in private rentals, because they don't wanna come when other people are there, so that's been helpful. Um, but we're, we just haven't seen the people coming back. And no matter how much we mess with the hours, I know we're still short-staffed, and we're trying to hire more, but, um, we, these numbers are still the way it is. And the other thing to remember when you're looking at the $18,000 is the pool's only been open since September. So the $74,000 from last year was July through December, where this 18 is only September through December. But even with that much, having 75% less is still a big number.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Susanna, we still don't have swim lessons back yet.
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if that might, and I know, like, staffing issues and whatnot, we're trying to work that out, but I'm wondering if that might, um, be helpful to?
Um, yes, it will.
You know, um, like, there's the people who come in for You know what, um, like there's the people who come in for exercise and they're going to come in on a regular basis. And then when you have, well, we have like the swim team, but when you have the swimming lessons too, then people are coming in on a regular basis.
Yeah, and we have swimming lessons coming in a couple of months. We're going to be training them now to the staff that we have to get ready. And so we have some afternoon sessions. And then we still have the third graders coming from Kiwanis that will be training. So, um, yes, the morning classes are full of our memberships. And we've got a little over a hundred, a hundred and seventy memberships, which before we were, you know, well over five hundred. So I mean, it's a lot less. So those classes are happy and they're moving forward. We just expanded to the two morning exercise classes. We also have seen, because we're really trying to reach out, right? We're trying. So what's one thing we've added that we never had before is one of the high schools is using our pool as their PE class, which has been really nice. And now a couple of schools have decided that their year-end parties should be at our school. So Emily and I are really working with trying to build relationships with the schools. The the swim teams were a real hit this year. So that's been really nice. National Guard is now coming back to use our pool for their training. So that's back soon. We'll reach out to SCUBA teams because they used to use it. So we're trying to to reach the community more and more to get other options for using the pool. A charter school had me fill out paperwork so that they can, their students can come and they could use it as their PE credits. So, I mean, we're looking at more and more creative ways. And we know summer is going to help some, but we're behind. And it's really what I want you to see, we're really behind where we should be at this point in the year. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the revenue part of the pool? I have another slide for the pool too, so.
Susanna, just on, on the pool in general. Oh, I don't know if we want to even jump on this one, but at some point, the thing is going to be unsustainable, right?
Correct.
And? I guess. I guess it becomes a decision for this body to decide at what point to? Do something else.
And in two slides, I'm going to talk about that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I read through this when I had my glasses and it just.
Yes.
More and more grim. About? How we could keep this thing going and I want to keep it going, but. Go ahead, but yeah, I can't see what you're doing, but I, but I did read through it earlier.
Okay.
It came away.
Okay.
Forgot dinner.
Oops.
Because of this.
I can't see without mine, so I completely understand.
It was just, okay, go ahead, please.
Oops, I think I missed the. Did I miss the expenses? Okay. See, one more slide and we'll go back to the pool again. So let's just kind of, so this one here is just taking all of our expenses as a whole and looking at them by the buckets that they're going to go in for capital outlay, personnel and materials and services. And as a whole, for all the funds combined, we spent thirty four percent of our budget at fifty percent of the year. So we're still spending at a slow rate. Some of that is contributing to some capital projects are being delayed as well. And then we're just being careful as we're spending and we're still have some staff shortages. So this is, this is where we're at right now with fifty five percent of our expenses have gone to staffing, thirty four for materials and service and eleven for our capital projects, just as a whole. We're just kind of consistent. I mean, the the personnel is a little bit lower than what it's been in the past. Any questions on the pattern of our expenses? Now, we're kind of consistent. We don't do anything crazy right here.
Susanna, one more question.
Uh huh.
Before we go ahead, are you, are you authorized to talk about staff shortages?
In what aspect, Mr. Mayor?
Can you tell us where they are and what concerns staff has?
So the the departments that are short is the finance department is short. The police department is short. The utilities is short. The pool is short. Sewer, sewer down one? No, so it's just the water, street, that combination. Because the utilities is between the water, the parks and the streets. They kind of do a, they split their percentages. So those guys are down. We need two positions there. We need one, we need two at the finance and the admin office. We need three at the police department. Just to, just to catch up with the one that we held back for the pers. And then now we have two officers and one more about to leave. So we're really going to be four short there. So those are the ones we're trying to fill. What, what, David? Oh, Brian, sorry.
You're good. I just remember your discussion from the last budget meeting.
On the police department?
Yeah, talking about that, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, we're all kind of tired. Actually, I checked in, oh, I forgot about the city manager position. So really, it's three that we needed, the admin office, city manager, an accountant and an office specialist. So, yeah. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The library also.
Oh, we're still short the library, sorry, poor library.
We cannot forget.
Can't forget the library? I think we're still down, well, two, I think we're down two, but we're going to try to get one filled this fiscal year and then add the other one in the next fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
So are these positions just being held vacant to a degree? Or is it a matter of we're not able to fill them currently?
Well, Melissa can speak to that because it's kind of both.
It is, it is a bit of both. Um, I think that we're actively recruiting for almost all of the positions right now or have been over time. We take a break because putting them out over and over again. So, yeah, we're, we are actively recruiting.
And to what degree do we, I don't know if this is a question for you, Susanna or Melissa, to be honest. So to what degree do we think that this is just a general labor shortage? Or is this our salaries are too low for what we're advertising, you know? What are we talking about here?
I think it's, it could be a combination of things. I think people are slow going back into the workforce right now. And you've got inflation the way it is and none of it helps. Plus, I know, and Dave can hop on here if he wants to talk about with the police department, just the challenges with recruiting there. I'm looking to see, here he is.
He did, he came on.
There's Dave, let me turn his mic on. Go ahead, Dave.
Hi, Dave.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So on the police department, on the hiring side of things, um, we are in process. We have a new officer that we replaced for Justin Witherall, Officer Nick. He's actually in field training, he'll be out on his own here soon. We had one other hiring that we were going to do as a replacement for the thirteenth. We lost Officer Mumi tonight is actually, he's on duty right now, but it is his last night with us. He is actually going to Texas, which is an unexpected loss. We were trying to be forward-thinking with this. We have a retirement pending in December of this year, a supervisor, and we were trying to overhire. So we've been in process and NTN actually have two candidates that are in process right now. One has passed backgrounds or in the next stage of that. The other officer, his background is being conducted. I don't know where that's going to stay in the future. So we have two other officers actually in process. And then we've already got the recruiting going for the third to replace essentially Travis leaving us. Go through the, the calendar dates, who's leaving and when and who are replacing. Part of our problem currently, and this is a statewide issue, is if I get an officer on board, the current officer we just brought on last week, he doesn't go to the academy until mid-June. It's sixteen weeks and then training. The next two, if we hire, we're probably looking at August or September as actually academy dates. So the longer these days go out for us as an agency, it's harder for us to bring those people on because of field training and the requirements of DPSST, to have them go to the academy, which extends somebody out. So we are now looking at probably almost over a year to a year and a half, depending on hire dates and academy dates before we actually have an officer in the field. So we are recruiting, we are there technically, I just don't have one. I don't know how the success is for the other two. Hopefully, they will be successful in the process. So we are moving forward as a very quick pace or the best that we can. If you have any questions, please ask.
I, I did have one follow-on to that, and thank you, Dave, I appreciate that. Are we at any, I don't know, concern of losing twenty-four seven coverage here? Or, I mean, how concerned should we be about this?
No, no, not at all. Currently, we have, Officer Munoz will be, it looks like he'll be out of field training soon. We will have complete staffing. It's those other, if we lose other officers, then at that point in time, is there an adjustment? There's other things that we can do to ensure that we have twenty-four hour, seven day a week coverage. I don't have any concerns of that whatsoever at this point in time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I can just, I'll just add on in general to recruiting. You know, last November, we posted a job or a couple of jobs. And I, we got not very many applications. I chalked it up, it's the holidays, you know, that we're just not getting people applying. And so we've reposted two different positions now. And for one of them, we got maybe five applications. And it's a position that it was a, it was a part-time library aide position. And it was, generally, we would get upwards of twenty applications for something like that, maybe more. Another position we just posted, you know, it, it's definitely moving on the slower side. And so we're, as a staff, talking and just trying to figure out different ways that we can get out there and attract people to come in and apply and try to be more creative in how we're doing that, so.
And some of the applications in the past that we didn't want to hire end up going somewhere else because they make more money. We lost some utility workers, we lost some officers that way because they got job offers in other places with more salary. So it's been rough. We've even tried to like do another temp and they couldn't get anyone from there. And she's like, nobody wants to work for that rate. So, I mean, so that's why I'm telling you, David, it's a combination of all of it. Because in twenty twenty, we didn't fill them. As people left, we just didn't fill them and we just went into comp time and overtime and more hours. I mean, our staff's just working over hours to keep up with the bare necessities, right? So that's just kind of where we are right now.
Well, thank you, I, I appreciate your work.
Go ahead, Susanna.
Any other questions on any of that part before I go back to the wonderful pool?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Not so much a question, Susanna, but when we were discussing at the budget meeting last week, you were talking about facility challenges with housing people and offices, whatnot. I think one way you guys could do is take a look at those positions. And if you can afford to offer them remote work, that's going to kill two birds with one stone. It's very attractive right now. Candidates are looking for the ability to work remotely. And if that's something y'all could do to reduce the number of actual physical spaces within the hall, city hall, then that's something you can take in consideration, just something to throw out there for you.
Yeah, no, that's something we've looked at too as well. Our hybrid, because there are some advantages, like I'm still doing a hybrid. You know, I still kind of, I have my mask and I'm still unstable, but you know, I'm, we do have some of that. But there are some points we need to be gathering. We can't do a hybrid for utility people. And we can't do hybrid for the library who are, you know, working with the books and stuff. So it just depends on what position it is, we can do hybrid. But city hall, we have a little bit of flexibility. So. But yes, that is on our list too, Brian, thank you. So one of the nice things, just just to come back around, because when COVID, we were done, we were all separated. And the finance team has been instrumental and keeping on top of everything. I'm a pretty visionary forward thinker, so I was able to bring in new stuff immediately and switch us to electronic and use Teams and Zoom and that stuff. So we never skipped a beat, never lost any rhythm with anybody. So it's, it's a policy that, that we're trying to write with our spare time. You just have to think, it's a good thing you have the finance person who, who's always been a change manager and loves change. Because in this day and age, change needs to not be anything you're afraid of. But you need to grab it, embrace it and be excited about it so you can keep up. Which is kind of, this is why we're at with the pool. So as you read the slide already, you can see that and the things I just talked about. So, and before the levy was approved, we had already said the pool was at the end of its life. And this levy was going to buy us time to make a plan. And so I'm bringing this back to the front again because we need to have a plan. If we're going to do something to save the pool, we're going to need to do it. And it's going to take us a couple of years to plan. So the levy is, was never designed to keep the pool open. It's to subsidize it. The charge for service is critical for keeping the pool alive. They, they balance each other. I mean, we budgeted a hundred and ninety for, um, for, where's it at? We budgeted a hundred and, mamma mia, a hundred and ninety for charge for service, for punch cards, rentals, memberships, drop-in, swimming lessons, right? And then we have a hundred and sixty-one budgeted for the levies, right? And then we have twelve hundred for, you know, the interest. So. We need to get really creative here and figure out what we're going to do with this. So I want us to do a work session after the, this budget is approved. We, there's just no bandwidth for us to do any, an extra work session when we really got to figure out what we're going to do with the next set of ARPA. Our staff needs to have our brainstorming sessions and then bring it to you guys so that we can figure that out. And that really takes precedence because we have a little time with the pool. But I would like, I'm putting this on here so you guys have time to think about it now. So that way, when we meet in May or July, probably, is probably what's going to happen. Because the budget will get approved in Ju, in May, I'll, you know, I'll be exhausted in June and we could reboot in June. And then we could have this session. And then that gives us a little time. So right now, we've been trying to figure out options for looking at grants, fundraising things. We're building lists now to try to have some ideas to come for you. But it's going to be also good for you guys to have these next few months to really think about, you know? You know, if we do a gigantic fundraising capital project fundraiser, for example. And if the guy that Alyssa and I talked to gave me some options to go look at grants, it's not going to build a brand-new pool. So it's going to take a combination of lots of things, right? Emily and I are also working on more creative things to do in summer and adding activities and setting up booth at like Summerfest or something like that so that we can become more visual in the community as well. So while we're putting all of those things together and you guys have some time to think, then hopefully in July, we can come up with a good plan. Because we're going to need a very serious strategic plan between now and the end of this levy to be ready to go to keep the pool. If we keep going at this pattern and don't come up with something, my projection so far is we're going to run out of cash by the end of this levy and there won't be anything left to even, to reboot. So we, we need a plan. We need a plan. So I'm just letting you know that so that we can be thinking first. And I, and I'm at the pool and I've talked to some ladies, they gave me a huge list. And some of the things I've already been kind of looking at and was looking at when we were approving the levy. But we, we, we just need a plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Susanna, to clarify, are you talking about the levy that we just passed?
Mm-hmm.
So in, so our current levy ends in June, right? At the end of June?
In four more years, this year plus four. We have till twenty four, twenty six, let's see, what is this? This is twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six is when it's going to end, right? So, yeah, I'm talking about to the end of that levy. Because right now, I'm building models that take me five, six years out. So all, the library, the parks and the pool, I've built templates past the levy so I can see how the levy sustaining the life of each one of those funds.
Other questions, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Susanna, when you say that we knew the pool was coming to the end of its life, how do you, how do you quantify that? We knew that when?
Well, we have a huge maintenance problem in our pool. We, we're losing ten thousand gallons of water a month. We've had massive repairs. We continue to have massive repairs. The build, the, the wall upstairs around the HVAC system is so old, chips of it are falling into our brand-new circular system and our HVAC system, which killed it a couple of times, caused. caused the pool to close a couple of times. We had to rebuild a new system to manage that. So it's a combination of all those things. The surge pit has trouble. So when we do the work session, Mike, who's been managing all of our maintenance, is going to come to get into the weeds of more of what's been going on. But it's all these big things that I've been talking about since I've been on the council. I mean, on the council. You're the council. I've been on the staff. Men, I've been on the staff, talking about our stuff. I was able to get organ trust to help pay for the circular system and a, and a big chunk of repair to an HVAC system we had to replace, right? So it's all of those combination of things that continue to grow that we're going to need to deal with.
Yep. So those issues have been the same issues for plaguing us for a long time, a decade at least?
Correct.
My question is, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds here. Were the political action committees that pushed for the levy, were they aware of that?
Yes. I've been to every levy meeting, so has Alyssa. We clearly let everyone know, we let council know when we were decided to go for the recreation levy and library levy, that this levy was literally going to buy us time to figure out a new plan.
Okay, I'll, I'll reserve my comments for later when we have a work session.
Okay. Any other comments on the pool?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to wait too. You go ahead, please.
So maybe not at our work session, but I would love to see, there were a lot of people when we were trying to go for the levy that wanted to be involved to keep the pool open and were willing to do. I mean, you've talked to them, to different people, obviously. But doing like a roundtable discussion like we've had with our planning of parks and, and the different planning things that we've had, it would be really nice to have something like that with, with people who are interested.
You like a public, what do they call those, what do they call those, Alyssa? Town meeting?
Like a town hall. Like a town hall about it so that we can hear ideas and get people who are invested, stakeholders that are invested in it and that would be interested in, because I'd love to see those people, you know, come forward and, and now that we are looking at seriously, figuring out what we, now that we have it open and we're looking at seriously keeping it or possibly building a new one or whatnot, I'd love to see them participate.
That would be, actually, it's not a bad idea. I like that. I mean, Brian, in part, I mean, we were at a critical moment where it was time to approve the levies. The levies failed twice. And so council, staff, the levy committees, the friends of the pool, the friends of the library, they decided in the parks, I'm not, in the parks, people were involved as well, that they thought that was the best plan moving forward, knowing we had some big, big issues with the building and the pool. So, and I think this is, this is, being the pool is an amenity. We've talked about that before on, on the priorities of how we spend our money and, and then a necessity versus an amenity. But I also see how it's really benefiting the community and all of you see the same thing. So having these next four years to really have a plan, to see what we can do is ideal. I mean, all our pipes are in the cement, which is really impossible to fix leaks. All of those things have been factors, Brian, from the life of the pool. And you can only kick the can down the road so many times until it's too late. And I really would hate to see this building collapse from neglect when we have time now to do something proactive and do something that could save it, rebuild it, or whatever we need to do, whatever the plan is. And I've been a part of big capital projects and fundraise. It's possible. It's just something you don't do in one year, though. It's going to take a few. And you can't over-fundraise a community. So you have to spread it out in a way that it's, you know, going to be okay. And I still hear from the people that don't live in, in Staten that come, who are eagerly willing to do more to help. So we have a good amount of people. It's just coming up with the best plan for this building. I mean, if you go in the pool right now, from the, from the circular system, the issue with the chips falling in and messing up the HVAC system, all our beautiful paint artwork is now ran down and smeared because there was so much moisture in there when the HVAC, when the circular system stopped because the HVAC system stopped with this other problems that it just, there was so much water in there. It was just terrible. So now I'm going to have to like paint the walls and, and put our chalk drawings back because there's, in that picture, you can't see. I had another one I took when I was at the pool the other day. The poor little brown, just slitting down the thing. So, I mean, this is just where we are. Yeah, Brian, I'm pretty transparent.
That's okay. That's fine. I, I don't disagree with you about that. I guess my, my concern is that, you know, two out of three times levy failed. And I think we have to listen to what the residents of the community are telling us. And my take on it is that the outside influence, that the resident that don't, that don't live in town, had a greater voice in saying whether the levy passed or not, and they have less skin in the game when it comes to financing it, to figure out how we're going to do this. And that really bothers me. Sorry, but it does.
I respect that completely, and that's a true factor. I don't have a problem with that. The town meeting would be a nice option. Because if the city itself doesn't think it's amenity they need and they want something different, I agree with you. And that's what we need to find out. We have this time to figure it out. Doing it when it was hot, when everything was chaos during the, the COVID and we're out of levy and we need to keep everything going, it wasn't the time to make that plan. But this is definitely that time. And I agree with your statement, Brian.
Well, Susanna, whenever, whenever we have a town meeting and full steam ahead, you're going to confront that group with some pretty significant numbers.
Just like I did with the levy committees.
Yeah, it's not going to be $150,000 for a new roof and an HVAC system. It's going to be some kind of take-your-breath-away numbers for just a swimming pool?
Yeah.
That kind of thing. So we'll forge ahead with it, though. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other thoughts? Well, I can't say when I'm at the pool. I don't have to even introduce myself. They're like, we know who you are. They can find me. They'll tell me what they think. So, and then this is just to kind of wrap up, just this kind of recap what we've been talking about. You can see that we're starting to see some movement and, and our revenue is beginning to move forward in a positive direction. ARPA has been a big part of our funding that we're dealing with and is really going to help the water fund at the moment. And we're going to strategically work through the ARPA funds as we're going forward. So we put that in the best spots forward for helping the city. And we'll continue to monitor these patterns as we're building the next budget. Any other, whoops, I went too far. Any other questions? Guess I can end it with just a cute little question slide. Okay, then if that's all, then that completes my presentation for this evening. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, Susanna.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Susanna. Next item is a report from Mr. Ludwig on Resolution 1013, Oregon Water Resources Department Water Project Grant Application. So, good evening, Lance, and go ahead, please.
You're muted, Lance.
What happened?
He was trying to talk. He was muted.
Sorry about that. I thought I unmuted it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, I was before you two weeks ago with a couple of presentations, one regarding the Roundabout and one regarding the ASR study that we had performed by Keller Associates and GSI Water Solutions. At that time, in that presentation, we went through the steps that we, we had done for that ASR feasibility study, how we paid for it through a matching fund from the Oregon Water Resources Department. And the final analysis from GSI Water Solutions stating that it's a very good likelihood that we could use that as a secondary water source. I, I believe I had said at that time, I would be back before you with the resolution to allow the city via the Public Works Department to apply for another water resources, Oregon Water Resources Department grant, an application to be submitted by the end of April. And this is a big water project grant. At the time when I made the presentation, I believe GSI had said the estimated project cost for the ASR system would be roughly $5 million. At that time, the grants that the OWRD, they are giving out are up to 75% of that project. So basically, four and a quarter million dollars, or $4 million we could get from the OWRD to help build this ASR facility. And so tonight, before you, I'm, I'm bringing this, this ordinance before you, or this resolution before you to get your blessing on applying for this OWRD grant. You have the options and the motions before you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this project or if you want to pass on the project.
All right, thank you, Lance. Folks, anything to start with?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Lance, can you remind us, so where does the, if we would cover the 25% of the project, where does that money come from?
Well, that would probably come from water SDCs and water fund. I, you know, I haven't, I haven't broke it all down because you're probably talking two years from now. But my guess is it's a secondary water source. That will be a project that'll be outlined in our SDCs for a secondary water source. So we probably could use some SDC money as well as water fund money.
Another question?
Didn't we have the money for that?
Currently, do we have the money for that? I don't think we probably do, no. But again, you're talking two years from now. And you don't have to accept the grant if you're awarded. I mean, you can look at it, look at your financial shape at that point, and then turn it down. And that's fine, too. I'm just bringing this before you to see if you want to go forward with it. That was a, that was a council goal in 2019 that we went and found another secondary water source. Sat, the staff has gone through the process of doing just that. We have found a potential, a potential area for a secondary water source. And I brought that to you. And now it's your decision whether or not we go forward and try to capture some more money to help build it. And that's what I'm bringing that before you tonight.
Sure. But there's the ability to, like you said, it's two years. So we have the ability to figure out and get that money, correct?
Yeah, my guess is that if we put the application in at the end of April, we probably won't know whether or not we've been accepted for it until September. And once we are accepted and get the contract fully executed, we probably have until, goodness, '23, probably January, February of 2024 to have it constructed or close to being constructed.
Thank you, Lance.
Designed and constructed. So it's probably going to be, you know, it's probably, probably looking at 2024, 2025 before it has to be completed.
Thank you.
And I, I, let me point out one more thing. This isn't a one-time-only grant. They generally come out every year at this time. I bring it before you because it's fresh. It's fresh in the minds of the OWRD. We've been working with the Oregon Water Resources Department for the last year and a half with this current project. Most of the application that we submit in this fund will be the results of that ASR study. So it's fresh in their minds. I don't know how to read that, whether or not that's going to look favorably. Our consultants seem to think it would, but they're consultants. So they want work, too. And I'll leave it at that.
Lance, from that report two weeks ago, would this, this test bore that, that engineering group did, would it supply our minimum needs? Our full-timer, on a daily basis, let's say? What do they guess?
No, no, it wouldn't. We'd probably be able to pull a million, million and a half gallons a day out of it for a period. I think we went for 90 days. And right now, in the summertime, we're pulling upwards of 6 million gallons a day. But it will, would do was prevent us from not having any water. I mean, that was the whole point of getting a secondary water source. If something was to happen to the North San Am River.
Right, right.
We don't have another water source. And, and that was the whole point of the, the goal. And during the goal-setting session, that was the whole point of looking for another one. And we, I think we found one. And yeah, so that's where we're at today, Mr. Mayor.
Lance, what would happen potentially? This is kind of a ringer question, so if there's no answer.
I like those.
I'll, well, I'll understand it. If we get in a, let's say, a water drought situation again, and all around us, there's, there are water problems, is it possible to partner with another community, them bearing part of the cost, of course, for this, not just the analysis, but the actual, you know, the project, an online kind of project? Is that possible?
Well, that's an interesting, an, an interesting, that's an interesting question that you propose. I think those are conversations that we can have. I, I think there's absolutely the possibilities of that. I don't really want to go into specifics of other cities and so forth during this conversation because it's not really something that's, I think that's for a separate time and a separate place. But yeah, the potential's there.
Okay, because, you know, a disaster in one area is likely to be a disaster in neighboring areas.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, just a, just a wild thought. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, Lance, thank you so much for this. This is very helpful. I just had a question about that remaining 25%, that little 25%. Do you anticipate locating any other funding sources for that grant-wise? I don't know, anything outside of just this, this grant?
You know, yeah, I had not looked at it. I mean, we just got the results back a couple, two, three weeks ago. And I knew about the grant coming up. I didn't know if we were going to make a timeline, so I haven't dove into it much. And I don't know what other grants are out there, to be quite honest, right now, David. ARPA funds, I think you can use for water projects. So, you know, if there's any more of those out there. I know Marion County's got another, another batch of ARPA funds next year. There's the potential. And then like the mayor said, there's the potential of partnering with other communities that aren't so far away from us to do something. But that's, again, that'll be, those are questions for the city council and that, whether or not they want to entertain that.
Thank you.
So there's potential for finding other funds, but I don't know where they're at as we speak tonight.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Lance, I recall that you said the grant funding was pretty competitive last discussion. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, it's always, Brian, it's always very competitive, which makes for, one of the reasons we went out and did this feasibility study was so we could be ahead of the game. Much like we're doing with the Roundabout. We want to be ahead of the game because it is so competitive. We're going to go in there and we're going to have a feasibility study, which we worked with the OWRD with. We had those guys out on our site doing testing and modeling, helping us build our model just so they know where we're at. And so that was one of the reasons why we did that, was that when we submit an application, if it's this year, next year, whenever. if it's this year, next year, whenever, they know we've done our due diligence and we've done, we've gone through the process. And I think that's a good selling point to any state, or any agency for that matter, that's looking to get money.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the crux of what the, this, the meeting, or the presentation was last time. And given that and considering how essential it is to find a second resource, I'm ready for us to move on if you all are.
No, sir. I, you know, again, we've been working on this. I believe you were all on the council during that, the goal-setting session. I believe I was actually working with David and Paige, perhaps, or maybe not, it was David for sure. And I remember this was a pretty significant conversation in our group meetings, and which is why we put it in our goal-setting, or one of our goals, for the next two to four years, which is why, as a staff, we've been working hard to get that, meet these goals. It's not just this, but the master plans, utility rate studies, all these goals that we're trying to meet. This was one of them. This was most, as far as I'm concerned, it's one of the most critical ones we have because we all need water, and we don't really have a secondary, we don't have another source, unfortunately. We've got Salem, but if they have problems with the river, chances are that they're not going to be able to supply us water either. So we're on an island. And that's really all I have, Mr. Mayor. It's really, at this point, it's up to the city council whether or not we want to go forward and apply, knowing that, you know, if we get it, we'll have to find ways to help come up with that 25%, or we just tell them we don't have the funding right now to meet that 25% and we move on. But the first step is to apply, and I, as a staff, in the Public Works Department, we would recommend that we move forward with this portion of it, and we'll see how the chips fall, whether or not we're selected.
Okay, all right, and thank you so much. I had another, a little, I don't know, these questions just sort of pop into our heads once in a while, and we're in the middle of something. Is the Water Control District in any position to, say, steal water from Salem? I mean, they're downstream, but they've got old water rights on the river. Do we want to get in any kind of a contest with Salem over who gets the water? Probably not. Answer my own question.
You know, as far as water rights in the North San EAM River, they're, they're like any water right, anywhere in the United States, senior rights rule. And of the senior rights we have on the North San EAM, the city of Salem has the most senior rights, and then comes the Water Control District. We have some senior rights. It's very minimal. It's like four CFS, I believe, something like that, or maybe a little less, which isn't a whole lot. And so regardless of how it went, what we want, we don't have a big say in that. It's really, this is a power player, this is a power broker's game, and it's, the power brokers in this contest are the city of Salem and the San EAM Water Control District. We're bystanders, pretty much, I hate to tell you that.
Okay, all right. I guess I kind of knew that, but thank you, yeah. Okay, what would you folks like to do with this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Counsel Patty. I move to approve Resolution Number 1033 to support applying for a water project grant and loan from the OWRD.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second, please?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. A motion and a second. To approve the resolution as presented, it's Number 1033 to support applying for a water project grant and loan from the OWRD, Oregon Water Resources thing, whatever that is. So questions and comments? If none, unless it would you hold the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, thank you, folks. Good, we'll move on.
Thank you very much. If you guys have any questions at any time, go ahead and email me, and I'll do my best to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Lance. All right. So that's taken care of, good. What do you folks want to do with this one? This has been hanging for a month. I guess we ought to do something with it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty.
Yeah?
I was surprised to see this back on the agenda. I thought it was on last week's agenda.
And we saved it so you could be here. Did this seem like a good idea?
Okay, I thought there was a motion, and it was approved and on the agenda a different way, so my mistake. Mr. Mayor, I think that all of us have had time to review this. At this point, to move forward, I just want to know if we want to do this as a council or individual council members, and I think that's going to pretty much tell me what I need to know from there.
Well, our legal representative, our legal representative, Counsel, told me this morning, and he's told us that before, that we probably should not get involved in things like this as a group. Individually, we're all welcome to write letters of support for anything we'd like, but we may not want to be in a situation where we're telling, aligning ourselves, not telling, aligning ourselves with groups that are doing things contrary, things contrary to the state authorities. This one is about over, was over, is over. It's the expression of a lot of people, a lot of frustration over a lot of time. It would have had more power, I think, if it, if it had been written six months ago, or a year ago, or a year and a half ago. But that was not possible because there was money involved then. We'll just hold back payments to your school district. And I don't think I'm exaggerating, and, you know, hey, we've all suffered with this, this two years of this. Our kids suffered, our businesses suffered. It has not been easy for anyone. We can't even find help. We have open positions in a city that pays pretty well, and has insurance. A lot of it's inside work and nobody lifting, and we can't find people. But this may be something to just, just either write letters ourselves or just let it go. And that's, after a lot of thinking and a lot of frustrating evenings thinking about this, that's, that's where I have to be. But I respect you folks' need to say something, do something. But I think the letter would have been more effective. Even at Christmas, even a couple of months ago, two, three months ago, when we were stuck in this, these restrictions, masks, a lot of unhappy, ugly things, and couldn't see our way through it. And now we kind of can. So that's enough for me, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I completely agree with you that I think a letter like this would have been better a while ago. And I think if you watched previous meetings throughout the, this entire thing, you could see that I was on board with that, and several times I wanted to write letters of support for different organizations or different things for this. So two points, one that you made, that we don't want to align ourselves with the people who are going against, I don't know exactly what you said, I'm sorry, but that are kind of going against rules and mandates and things. This doesn't go against anything. It doesn't say that they're going to go against anything. It's asking, it's more of an ask, or explaining why they think that we should have more local control. And I think that it's important to support something like this, even if it's over, because one, I don't, I'm not really above the opinion that it's actually over, and two, if we just say, well, it's not, it's a moot point right now, that's not to say that something like this isn't or can't come up again. And so supporting like, something like this, to say, hey, there, it's not just the school district that feels this way. There are other governmental agencies, I don't know, I guess we're not a governmental agency, but there's other boards and communities that also feel this way. And I'm not saying this is not a pro or against mandates or anything like this. This is, this is pro governmental control. This is pro home rule. This is us being able to make decisions for our community, for the school to be able to make decisions for their community, for what is best for them, and not have this overarching, broad, these broad rules that don't make sense for your community. And I, again, I'm just talking in a general sense, because this could be anything. So in terms of, I, I just, I hesitate to, to have so, to have someone have so much power over our community when they don't know what's actually going on. So when you have statistics that say that in Marion County, all these things are happening, but when you look, it's actually happening up here and we're down over here, so it's not really affecting us the same way, I just think that it's important for us to be able to make decisions, again, for our community, even if it's on the county level, because situations, this is, something like this is going to come up again, whatever it is. And so to say that it's important for us to be able to make those decisions, I had another point, I can't remember what it was, is, is absolutely, is absolutely important. If I think of it again, I'll come back to it. But that's why I don't think that saying something now in support of this is, okay, so the one point was that this is not going against anything, and two, saying something in support of this letter, even if it's just the state and city council supports, then, you know, the school district, however we want it to say, because it gives us back our, our power in terms of, or our voice in terms of these situations. So that's all I have to say. Well, no, I might have something else if I remember it.
Well, sure. I'd like to seen some signatures on it, and I didn't, which I guess is okay. And there were, there are people who protested more, more vociferously and more, in more different ways. If you guys can stand it, can I tell you a story real quick? Place called Baker City, thank you, no one yelled, so I was going to go ahead with it. Place called Baker City, the mayor over there, probably last fall, decided she wanted to be governor, and so she started by, of course, lambasting the Oregon Health Authority and the governor, and everyone else that was making decisions that didn't reflect what she thought their community was. So she told her city council and community that governor didn't understand, we don't have COVID here. And the editor of the local newspaper over there, who was a state and kid, and I knew him when he was a high school student, this is years ago, he wrote a little editorial and he said, of course, we don't have COVID here. As soon as someone gets sick, we send them to Boise, which is a little distant, more than a little disingenuous. That's not quite telling it like it is. But there are those kinds of reactions to this, the last two years we've suffered through. I thought that was, since I knew that kid wrote that, I thought, that's, that's okay, that's thinking, and that's telling the rest of the story. Anyone else, someone else? Let's get going on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Eight thirty?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So two things. After our last meeting, I was kind of unsettled about how the item was removed from the agenda. I don't remember exactly what the Roberts Rule's about at the time when it occurred. I did think that you might have had that ability to do that after researching it. I don't believe you have the ability to do that. Once the agenda item is placed on the agenda, the council is the only body that has the ability to remove an agenda item, so I, just for future reference, please keep that in mind. Second thing is, I don't want to speak on the subject matter itself, because I think we are past that at this point. However, to Counselor Ort's point, there's potential for it to come up in the future, and I want to reserve that ability to speak freely if that indeed comes up in the future. I think the use of the emergency clause has been overused heavily, but again, it's a debate for another day, but I think from this perspective and the request on my behalf is I'm not going to take any action on the letter.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I, I think you can tell how I feel about this. However, Counsel Quigley brought up a good point that just came to my mind, and so I do not want to support, or I don't want to send a letter from the council unless it's unanimous. And so if the entire council doesn't feel comfortable doing that, then I, I will vote no on that. Because I, I think it's important if we're sending something, even if it's important to me, I think if we're sending something as a council, then I want to respect my other counselor's wishes.
Now, with that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I will move that we do not send a letter of support. Well, I guess we have no motion necessary, so we don't need to do that. Independently, I may do that, and maybe we'll be signing on to something there, but thank you so much.
That's perfectly okay. No, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I will say that I just, I appreciate conversations like this, because I think it's important to hear where people are coming from. And, I mean, I still stand by what I said, but again, something, a communication coming from all of our, from all of us, I think it's, I want to be fair in that respect.
Counselor McDonald?
I don't have a ton to say on this. I probably won't be participating as well. The only thing I will say is that I think it's very easy for people to believe they would have made a different decision in hindsight. I don't envy at all what decisions the leaders at our state level had to make. You know, they, they're the ones with the most information at the time dealing with a novel virus that, you know, we had kind of guesses on what it would do and, and a lot of presumptions. We didn't really know, and I think very early on in that, in the pandemic, someone said to me that it's very important, you know, it, being overly cautious is ideal, and what overly cautious looks like if you're overly cautious when you get down the road, it looks unnecessary, but you don't know that until you get there, right? I understand the ideal about, about how, you know, it can affect different communities But I also believe that, you know, when you're dealing with something in the unknown, that it's also important to be able to act quickly. And that's, that's kind of where those, where those state powers come into play. And I think a letter like this, at this point, is pretty ineffectual. You know, I don't, I don't think everything was done, done perfectly, of course. I don't think there's a possibility that it could have been done perfectly. Nobody really had all the information ahead of time. But in general, I think there's a reason why we had some of the lowest case rates and some of the lowest death rates in the country. Whether you believe those were... Whether you believe those were, you know, infringing on your rights or not, the, the people that didn't die, probably, or didn't realize they didn't die, should be probably pretty thankful for that. In any case, um, and I, I'm not going to take any particular action on this.
Thank you, Counselor. So, shall we just let this one go? And those of you that feel strongly about it, uh, supporting it. I spent my working life with that school district, so if anyone should have some strong feelings about it, it should be me. Anyway, communications from city staff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think that Dan was going to hop on and share an update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I just wanted to quickly remind you that a week from tonight at the planning commission meeting, there will be a basic land use training session. You should have received an email or invitation to that, oh, I don't know, 10 days ago or so. If you, uh, plan on attending, you can do so either in person, it will be there in the, uh, community center meeting room, uh, or by Zoom. If you intend to be there in person, I would appreciate knowing so that we can have adequate handout materials for everybody. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Anything else, Alyssa? Communications from myself or the council? Anything, folks? I thought I had something I was going to bring up tonight. It's there somewhere. Uh, go ahead. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Quick question probably for Dan or for Chief. I, I'd like to know whose responsibility it is to enforce parking. Let me rephrase this. If you have a vehicle parked on a curb in the city, how is that addressed? Is that a planning issue? Is that a police department issue? Is it a non-issue?
Uh, Counselor, I would, I'll probably answer that. I would say it's always an issue. A lot of that is us being aware of it. Currently, the police department, um, will respond to those types of calls and handle those. So a lot of times when complaints come in, depending on how they come in, they're, they're assigned to, to officers to deal with, depending on that. And if they see things during the routine patrols.
Okay, so it's not reported to, then they respond? They can see it on their own? They can self-initiate it?
Yeah, of course, like anything else. They can self-initiate that.
Okay. So if I'm aware of a certain situation that's been like that for months on end, how do you think that should be addressed?
I, I would hope that that person would probably come to me or my captain and let us know that there's something that hasn't been addressed and we will ensure that it does.
Okay. I will send that your way. I'm just a little surprised that it hasn't been, action hasn't been taken out to this point when you can drive by and clearly see it and it's been going on for months.
I will, let me know what it is and I'll address it.
I'll send you a note. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a, as a thought, years ago, we asked people not to park or not to live in RVs in the community. And then we, we decided that that was a little harsh during the pandemic. People had housing issues, burned out and canyon fires and, uh, economic dislocation. Is, um, is it something we want to think about or address again at some point? Of asking people not to, not to live in RVs and motorhomes, uh, in the city?
Dave?
It could be a thing of fees.
I, I don't think that we changed the rule. I think we were allowing a little grace during the wildfires, but I see Dave and Dan are here. I'll let them answer.
It's a combined deal on that, during the wildfires and afterwards, because so many people were displaced. We were monitoring and checking and trying to get people to resources. A lot of the motorhome stuff that you'll see off and on is a lot of our unchallenged population that's, you know, hanging off a string, getting around. We continue to, to work with those folks when we run into them and try to do those types of enforcement as they're brought up to us or again, as officers see those things. So you'll see that. I know that I often see, uh, when I've come into town, like out the Park and Ride, which is in part of the city, that you'll see numerous vehicles and stuff. And we actually will, you know, continue to work with OSP out there or different spots and try to work as a team to address those things and talk to folks. So, uh, Dan and I both, you know, I know he's on. We communicate very well together when we come up with issues and, uh, when it comes to code and, uh, address those as they come up as appropriately as we can.
Yeah, I'll just follow that up with, um, there was a period of time, fall of 20, the winter of 2021, where we, shall we say, provided a little bit of grace to people who were in emergency situations because of the wildfires. Since that time, I've, I've responded to when I'm notified or when I see, uh, RVs that appear that perhaps they are lived in. Letters have gone out to property owners informing them that, uh, the code limits the occupancy of an RV on private property to no more than 14 days in any 60-day period. And usually after getting that notice, uh, next time I go by, things do not appear to be lived in.
All right, thank you.
I'll, I'm just going to add one more little plug on our website. There is, if you go to stateinoregon.gov and there's a tab called Resources, there's a link under there called Code Enforcement Complaint Form where people can send in, uh, any code enforcement complaints and they'll come to the, to us. And we can get them taken care of as you see them. Save you a phone call.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. Uh, if I may, I was able to get into the library. I guess they have some new hours on Saturdays from like 10 to 2. And I just wanted to let everybody know because I didn't see a lot of people down there, so that hopefully other people will take, uh, advantage of that opportunity if they work Monday through Friday like I do.
Sounds good.
Counselor Patty, we actually had a slow morning in a busier later part, so I wouldn't worry about nobody coming down.
Gotcha. Sorry about that.
They were more of a late riser Saturday kind of deal.
Oh, okay. I must have got a cup of coffee then, huh?
Yeah. But thank you.
Is there anything else this evening? Well, let's go home then. Thank you, folks. Good night.